Ready? Okay, 7:32, all rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call please.
Patterson, here.
Henderson, here. Conan?
Here.
Slid.
Here.
Gillicky?
Here. Okay, so approval of agenda. So before we approve tonight's agenda, I've got some revisions. So we have the land split on Fulton. So I'd like to move that from number seven to number nine and move eight and nine. So eight would be seven, nine would be eight, and seven would be nine. So the reason being, the land split is going to be kind of how we do the special approval and then the land split will be the special approval will be contingent on the land split going through. But there's some stuff to go through on the driveway. So the next thing I'd like to add, I'd like to add a number 11 and that's going to
10A. 10A.
10A? 10A? Okay, 10A. So that will be our letter that we ask council to do. We're going to discuss that. So we need discussion on the changes? If there are none, somebody make a motion to approve the agenda.
Yes, we have it. I'll settle.
Okay.
Sir.
On favor?
Aye.
So move. Okay, so approval of minutes for ten. So only pledge, Conan and Patterson.
Motion to approve the minutes just presented. Subway 10, 217.
Second. Have you got it second?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so move. Now minutes from September 6. Okay, David Exon anyway, so.
So motion to approve minutes as of January 6th, 2017.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
So move. Okay, so now we're to the public hearing for 7:35, 4:30. Hold. Okay. So this is, we're just going to go through this. This property is the old vet clinic, Kraus Vet Clinic and now it's sort of, the applicant wants to put in a
Kennel.
Kennel, dog kennel. Okay. Impossible boarding?
That's what you do in front of us.
Okay, you do, okay. So you want to say anything about it? If not, just go into public comments.
I'm not sure if anybody here, I don't know that, I'm sorry, John? John is the neighbor to the south of us. And just to kind of let you know what's going on, I'm going to be moving into the house up front. Me and my children are. I plan on doing a lot of work up there. The clinic itself, we're going to be using for administration and possibly some smaller animal boarding among other smaller services we're going to offer. In the back of the clinic is a 30 by 30 pole barn to the southern side of the clinic, which is going to help in all different ways with screening and noise and whatnot. My kennel buildings, there'll be a drawing for you how they're going to be set up. There are two separate kennel buildings. I only have nine runs in a very small kennel. They will be fully functional buildings. They're insulated, they're almost like a house, really. I built them almost exactly like a house. Tile floor, RFP paneling and whatnot, heating and cooling, professional grade. Kenneling with the fencing. Those will be surrounded by, well, the fencing for the dogs themselves and the unit is six foot high. Surrounded by a six foot privacy fence. The buildings on all four sides, all four of those sites where applicable, will have green belt screening. That's going to cut down on pretty much everything. And I invite anybody who's here that has any concerns about this kennel that you can come and see what exactly what did I have set up at my house already. I'm more than proud to give force. One of the considerations that they brought up here is odor and I'm very proud to say that my kennels do not stink ever, ever. Everything is sanitized with bleach inside and outside, including pegramble runs. Noise, I know that that is a concern with it being behind the clinic, with it being to the side of the pole barn, with the six foot fence and the green belt. The possibility of noise is more nice and I have to admit personally, just because I ward dogs doesn't mean I want to hear them myself. I don't allow them to sit out there and bark. Dogs bark, I get that. I don't want to hear it. My neighbors don't want to hear it. So I honestly, I've never really had a pet. I have neighbors at my house currently that don't even know that I have kennels.
Disposed?
They're right.
Disposed?
Yeah, they're very close to me.
You said on the side, I'm on the north side. I have two houses.
Okay.
We got the renters who will be next to you and I'm the stone, because the stone on the front.
And I'm next to him.
Okay.
But mine goes down in books because I wanted to buy it from there.
Yes, okay, I know exactly.
I'm trying to solve. You said I have a little pole barn on the back. The kennel's going to be to the north of it?
Yes. Everybody kind of see that? I know it's very small.
It is, that's the clinic.
That's the clinic right there.
That's the existing kennel area. That's all fenced in.
So there's going to be the two buildings from south where the dogs are housed, inside and out, insulated, fully insulated. Like I said, so when they're in there, they can come outside to these exterior runs. And one of the things that's going to cut down on the noise with the kennel is that I do not socialize dogs directly. They can see each other, they can talk to each other through the fencing, but they do not go into the play area right here. Only one dog or one family of dogs in the play area at a time. And that is just for liability, it's for safety, it's for sanitation. It's just better off. You might have the best dog in the world, you might have the best dog in the world, but the two best dogs in the world aren't going to get along. I'm not going to test that. So each one of those buildings, like I said, is going to be surrounded by a privacy fence, a six foot solid privacy fence. That privacy fence is going to be surrounded by a green belt. Also with it being next to the pole barn and behind the clinic and with the distance it is behind the houses from the house, then you've got the parking lot, then you've got the clinic, then you've got the kennels. The chances for any disruption at that level is pretty minimal and I already gave John here, you do something, you give me a call. They're coming in. I start operations probably around 7:30 in the morning. We make it our first potty breaks, we go outside, our first breakfast, we go outside, come back in. They're letting in and out throughout the day. They don't stay out all day long, while they're permitting. I want my customers to be happy and one thing that makes them happy is that the dog is getting outside. What doesn't make me happy or you happy is the dog's being outside barking. There's a happy medium there. So they get as much outside time unless they're talking too much. And about, about now, actually earlier because it's getting darker earlier, they come in for the evening. They've already had their dinner, their last potty breaks. Things are prepping up at the kennel. We're cleaning up for the evening and then we're on lockdown for the rest of the night. There is no outside time at nighttime. Everybody's on lockdown. At that point, the only reason I would have to go there at night, maybe if somebody needs a midnight check for medications or whatever. But for the most part, you're looking at operations between 7:30 in the morning, approximately 7:30 at night. The traffic is minimal. Unlike the current clinic that was there now, they have four doctors in there with an appointment every half hour, forty five minutes. I have a drop off time approximately nine o'clock in the morning. Some drop offs during the day.
So the majority of what you do is boarding?
The, it's my focus for this purpose. I also have other aspects of my business. I have other people that work for me.
See, I don't, I don't know. I always thought a kennel is you raise puppies.
No, that's, that is breeding. That is not kenneling. Kenneling is the purpose of boarding dogs for the, to make money. When you're breeding, I would not refer to that as kenneling in any way.
So you're not breeding?
I am absolutely not breeding dogs.
Because that's like, I heard everybody saying, well, you're going to have a puppy bill.
No, absolutely not. I do not. In fact, you can't even come into the kennel unless you're fully updated on your shots. Some puppies are not fully updated on their shots until five months of age and they can't come in. I don't even, see Carla has some pictures of the kennel right here.
What's going to be in the existing clinic?
The existing?
Clinic?
Clinic, I'm going to do a, it's going to be wonderful. I'm going to have an office.
Well, it's an awful big building.
It is, and we've got a lot of opportunity to do several different things.
Because the kennels are over here, right?
Yes.
You got what, nine kennels?
I have nine runs, two kennels with nine runs total.
Yeah, but those kennels got to be split up. I mean.
The parts, yes.
You got to be, yeah, walls or something.
Yes, it's a different building.
I'm thinking you're going to have mine.
These are gates, fences.
Yeah, let's hear it, there's going to be.
That is a building. And if Carla's got that picture, I'd show you.
Yeah, I should pass it over there. We wanted to go through it at this point.
Here are, when somebody says kennel, this is what they're referring to. The building in which the dogs are boarded.
Yeah, but they're not all together.
No, 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 there's two separate buildings. This top one's got four runs, the bottom one's got nine runs. Or I'm sorry, five runs.
A dog for each one run. Can their dogs go in and out?
I'm in control of when they go in and out. They can't just come in willy nilly. Some of them stay out there and blizzard if I let them. But they, I am in control of when they go in and out.
But it'd be quieter when they're in.
They don't go out at night at all?
No, 7:30, 8 o'clock, we're done for the day.
Then they're in the rest of the day.
Then they are in. And like I said, these are all fully insulated like you would have in a house, if not more so, because I don't want to hear them either. I don't, when they're in, I'm done with my day, I'm done.
I'm sure, you have a business somewhere else, right?
I do, right now it's up in Riley Township.
Where?
Riley Township.
Riley, okay.
Kenneling means temporary?
Temporary housing. When you go on vacation. I'll take a dog, you got a dog? Okay, so you've got, now you've got a kennel. So other things that we possibly were thinking of doing now that I have a wonderful building to work out of instead of a house. Next big thing, whenever my customers ask for services that I don't have, I will try and add those on. For example, the next big thing after kenneling that they brought up was grooming. So we took on some grooming and that's been taking off quite successfully. I prefer to do that within the clinic building itself. That would just be a lot easier. A lot of people have asked for cat boarding. That's a new one, we're going to give that one a shot. That one, if somebody has my previous proposal, I have, that's what's called kitty cat condos, whereas you put them into a cage that's multi-level and they can be housed within the clinic. It's often cats are pretty quiet. Another thing that we're going to offer is, let me back up. Another thing I do offer is at home pet care and animal care. The reason I say pet and animal is because we do everything from hamsters on up to Clydesdale horses and beef cows and livestock. That's at home. But necessarily when you, your kid brings home the hamster from school, now you got to go on vacation, how are you going to take care of the hamster? Do you really want somebody coming into your house? No, you can go grab a 10 gallon tank or we'll have a 10 gallon aquarium. Bring them to me, 10 bucks a day. We'll make sure he's got food, water and fresh bedding every day. So that's another thing that we're going to do in the clinic. And those are all really quiet. And as far as traffic, as far as odors, I think that we've addressed that. Barking, I do not want to be a problem. And again, if you're familiar with the house on Fulton, it needs a little bit of work. Needs a lot of work. And I want to do that work. I want to see it become what it should have been. I'd like to get possibly a hold of the Armita Historical District and see if they have an opinion on anything they'd like to do.
So you're going to be in Kraus' old house here?
Yeah.
Does he own them on both sides of the driveway?
So does anybody have any questions about the business itself?
How long have you been in business?
You know what, I totally forgot. I think it's around five years now.
Is nine enough to always be enough for you?
My customers want me to stay small.
So as well, we're not looking to expand in this year?
I don't think so. Even if I wanted to expand, I would probably have already thought about this ahead of time. I would probably go to a much bigger commercial facility. But nine is enough for me right now. Nine runs is enough for me right now.
Somebody in the building at all times then, what, during business hours?
No, when they're in lockdown, there's really no need to have anybody in there. But the advantage that I'm going to have while I'm in the village now is internet. I can put cameras in there.
And you're living right next door.
Do you have any questions?
I'd just like to address the question about expansion. So in terms of the approval that is in front of the board tonight, or in front of the commission tonight, expansion above and beyond what's shown on the plan would have to come back to this body anyways and so you'll have a chance to review and do the whole process again.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I'd like to thank you, Ms. Kuzin, for a great explanation. I'm sorry to put you on the spot, but you explained it much better than we were. Okay, any comments from the public?
I have one more question.
Turn.
What's the village ordinance on storm sewers and commercial parking lots?
What is the ordinance? It all depends on the parking.
Is it required? That's what I'm asking. I have commercial buildings on either side of me, on the low land. I have no storm sewers.
Commercial building on both sides of the?
I have an apartment building, multi whatever you call it, and then I have a commercial building here.
So, okay, so there is, it's not really storm sewers, it's water runoff.
Okay.
So, okay, so water runoff is, you were here when we talked about that Kraus building before and we had discussed the water runoff at that time. So that's what we do rather than storm sewers. If there's a sewer present, but a lot of places there isn't.
And I believe last time we were here, Kraus was looking to improve when he was going to install drains.
It was going to be kind of, if I remember, there was something to that aspect, yes.
There is not here?
We haven't, this is a public hearing. So we're not, we're not into that aspect as of yet. Okay, so motion to exit the public hearing?
So move.
Sir?
Okay, no in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so now we're into the public hearing. So that's the actual approval. This is these bed and bed gates. Thanks again for a great explanation. So the planning commission has heard your previous explanation and this one. So it sounds like you've done your homework. So there's a few things that we need to do. So that your screening and green belt or privacy fencing around the kennel and the dog runs is great. So as we kind of talked, so there's, everybody have this drawing? Okay. So on the part of lot nine, that would be the eastern section of that lot. So the dividing line. So we're proposing to extend that green belt. So it would be the north and south boundary. Okay, also on the southern boundary from the, do we have to go up to the vet clinic and then we start here? Okay, so.
You know, full 140 or you below?
So we're at the tail end of the 140, to the left or to the west. So where the corner of the building is, so we'll go a few feet from the east of the corner, east of the western corner of the building and require screening from there to the northwest corner and then going south all the way down that line and then to the west to just pass where the 200 foot is. So that would be kind of even with the dog runs. North and south. So what you've done is screened that, hold that section in from the three adjoining parcels. Actually, the four adjoining parcels.
So you're talking?
From here? Are you going to? From here?
Oh, yeah. From here, here, and here.
So here?
Well, as I said.
Yeah, but that'll.
To.
I don't think they want to.
Yeah, but it doesn't take here.
No, he is here.
So around this corner, that's you, right?
Yeah.
That's what you look for.
You're just looking for a typical.
You're also here. Excuse me?
No, no, but we're here, right, sir? Yeah. John lives over here.
You live over here.
I mean, you're over here. You said you're between here and.
With the sun.
And if there's natural screening, you can use a natural screen. So it doesn't mean you have to put a, it's always there. Right. And then garage pumps. You have to make sure that that screening is there. It's kind of like you're done here. So this is existing, you need to put this in. So there's nothing shown on this drawing that there's anything existing, but. Ryan does it. And it looks like mainly on your property anyway.
So yeah, so eventually probably basically screen out.
Over here, look at, it's real in the.
Correct, yeah. So then that, that screens out this area. Well, you don't have, yeah, just run it just past that. So draw this straight line, go view that way, like it's good. Make sure, Brian?
Would you hear, do you hear much?
Of course, they're not, they're not so much more. They'll all stay on mic, 25, 10 rounds of this.
No, I was very interested. Yeah. Really got pigs squealing over there versus kicking and, you know. But they ignite it. I'd say it's never been, it seemed to be a problem for me.
Okay, so we can keep moving on? Okay, everybody's kind of got that? Okay, we're kind of all in agreement? Okay. So you're not adding any lighting, you're just, the external lighting? You're just going to leave the one that's existing there?
There's two. There's two, one at the existing pole barn and then one at the clinic itself.
Oh, okay, all right, okay.
And they'll hit lighting.
Okay. So, okay, so those are existing. So the only thing that we would ask is that you make sure that it's. Okay, being as neighbors, does that, how is that light?
Not a problem.
Okay, good, so we can leave those lights as is? Okay, good, okay. That's what I was trying to get out. So the dumpster, if you're going to put a screening around the dumpster, if we do that other screening, you have your natural screening, just put some kind of a pad, it could be gravel, it could be.
No, we did have fencing around that to provide screening already.
But if you do the, the green belt screening, as long as you can't see the group of the dumpster through that green belt screening, that should suffice.
What's going in this dumpster? Well, I'm just thinking, I mean, this is closer to the residence.
You're talking about the pet waste?
Yeah. You know, all the pet waste.
I was actually thinking about using that dumpster but garbage cans because I can seal them off.
But I'm, I just like wondering if it'd be a lot better up here more.
Of where?
Well, here you got it right, you know, close to the residence.
Yeah, well, just, where would you like?
Well, I'm just saying, we're up back here somewhere.
How do you get there?
Back here.
To be honest with you.
Right here, there's all sorts.
We got a drive back.
There is a drive back here.
Um, to be honest with you, I have like one garbage bag a week. So that dumpster is actually kind of overkill. That's why I was asking if I could use garbage cans that have the stack tops. That's what I use now. And then there's really no issue with it.
As long as you've got somebody to pick them up.
It's getting picked up, yeah.
I don't know. I don't know how that works, to be honest with you.
You've contracted with your.
Yeah, the village does not have municipal garbage.
There's a couple there for.
Yeah.
Okay, so like when I move into the house, I have to find somebody to pick up my garbage?
Yes, yes.
I mean, even so, like what I do right now, I just throw out my own, my kennel waste goes out with my personal garbage. That's how much, I have more personal garbage than I do for the kennel.
I don't like it always taking down the little stool though. Yeah. He pays for it now.
Okay. So we have a real, right?
Yes, very nice.
Thing.
Three underlines.
Prepared.
Brian Keatsby.
Oh, right there, okay. So I'm going to introduce Brian Keatsby. He's our professional planner. And if you could kind of take over for a few minutes?
Sure, absolutely.
You notice I'm kind of delegating all this?
It's all I get paid for, right? So the commercial kennel, so Ben and I have been speaking about kind of the differentiation between a traditional kennel, which in planning and zoning terms is more considered a hobby kennel, something that you might raise sport dogs or something like that versus a commercial kennel, which is a for-profit business. And so we're classifying this as a commercial kennel, even though it is a very small one in the larger scheme of things. As a commercial kennel, it is permitted in this specific site by special land use. That's why we're all here tonight. We've hit on a lot of the key notes from our review letter. There are a few things that I want to bring up and we can chat about them. The first would be verification of an appropriate license to hold the kennel. Do you hold one?
I don't currently have one. The kennel kind of grew on the property, but I have to have an existing kennel for McComb County come look at and I know that I far exceed their expectations.
Sure. Yeah, and I don't, I don't see anything in all of your documentation that would cause any concerns there. So, but we will want to make sure that the village has verification of that on file moving forward. The, another concern from the ordinance, I mentioned commercial kennels because the differentiation, the ordinance requires 500 feet of setback from a commercial kennel to any residential structure. And so that requirement isn't met based on the confines of its site. And so that, that requirement isn't met based on the confines of its site. If we go back to kind of a hobby kennel and the requirements that are put in place for those in the R1 district, that separation is only 50 feet. It's pretty small. Unfortunately, there's not really a way around that requirement other than a variance. So any approval that this body gives for the special approval use will be contingent on the applicant being able to achieve a variance for this particular use.
So she's gotta go on the zoning board by the LCVA?
Yeah. It would be another meeting.
So, you know, there's a lot of things that are supportive of that variance. You know, there's a lot of things going for it in accordance with master plan and what the confines of the site as it is.
Nonconformity.
Correct. And I think that appropriate buffering that we've already talked about can get rid of a lot of the concerns that that 500 feet is put in place for. So just note that that'll be a item that you should place any motion contingent on the granting of a variance. The other piece that is later on your agenda is the land split. There's some property being reallocated and realigned for this, and so we can get into that later. The plan that you have in front of you shows post-split boundaries essentially. So you will need to, to make an approval motion contingent on that land split.
Yeah. Good point. To decide the fact you're, that you're gonna go to the size, the acreage.
So the acreage is one dimensional measure that isn't on the plan, the total acreage. Acreage should be greater than one. I don't have any concerns that this is gonna make.
Yeah. No, I kind of did some head math and it isn't a whole lot over, but it is over.
1.4. We calculated that to be approximately 1.42 acres.
1.42? Yeah. So, so that is the one piece of verification there. Then in terms of site plan, the plan meets, the plan exceeds any parking requirements for use such as this. There would need six spaces designated. Nine shown on the plan, including two very free spaces, so that's not a concern. There's a nonconformity being the shape that this is. The driveway is too small to meet modern standards. However, the boundary realignment is going to expand that, the width of that drive to approximately 22 feet, which is just shy of the 24 required for a driveway. But moving closer towards conformity is something that this body can approve. We don't have any concerns. Didn't note that the plan does show some ornamental fencing along that driveway to separate out of the residential uses and kind of remove any concern about children running across the driveway, kind of at the blind driveway as folks exit. So that's a good thing. You mentioned grading. There is no grading shown on the plan. The piece stone runs should allow water to run through just fine, so you don't have any concern with any increased stormwater towards any of the adjacent properties or towards the creek at all. So we don't see any, any change in stormwater. There is, I guess the last thing I'll touch on in terms of the site plan is signage that was submitted. Anybody has signage packets in front of them, but there are two potential signs that were submitted. One was 15 inches by 36 inches. One was 20 inches by 36 inches. These are ground mounted on two freestanding legs. The location is good. The site plan shows that the sign would be placed outside of the clear vision triangle as defined by the ordinance, so folks heading. So in terms of the ordinance, the sign shouldn't pose any concerns for visibility. The size of the sign is well within the allowable square footage for a ground sign on a use like this in the R1 district. So we have no concerns there.
Could I have a quick question?
Sure.
I gave the dimensions, 15 by 36, 20 by 36, that's the size of the sign. How tall are they allowed to be?
They're allowed to be.
I had that question on my drawing too.
Now the signs.
Just half the page. Six foot.
Six feet tall?
Yeah, but I wouldn't do that. Because you, you don't really have a commercial area that you're putting the sign in. You're putting it in on a residential property for a commercial property.
Okay.
So what would you like to have?
I would like the ornamental fence is three foot tall. I would like to possibly have it visible above the fence. So have the bottom. Isn't?
Well, you can't have, you can't have the fence three foot tall by the front of the driveway.
Okay.
So what is your ornamental fence gonna be?
I, in my original package, I gave you a, it's a short little pink looking fence, three feet tall. I guess what I'm asking is.
Well, let's get by the driveway first.
Okay, whatever, I don't know, whatever it is.
Okay, so there's a, there's a requirement that it's only 30 inches at the sideline. So when you're kind of coming to the sidewalk and you stop and go onto the traffic, go into traffic, it can only be 30 inches. So you can see over top, so 30 inches. Yeah. So you can step it. So then your sign wouldn't need to be so tall because it would be in that area.
And then it goes up to 36 inches? You tell me how tall you want, really.
Well, I'm only one person on the committee, but I'd like it to be no taller than what it actually has to be. So what that entails, how, let's see, what is your committee?
So you got one sign at 15 inches, the other one?
Yeah. Okay. So let's say using the 36, the 15 by 36. So now you're basically 30 and 15.
Say 48.
Only 45 inches. So you're under four foot.
Under four foot?
Yeah.
So four foot from the top?
Yeah.
I'd almost say the bottom of the sign should be six inches above.
Well, that's what I was saying. So 36, you're going to 51.
Okay.
And what I'm thinking, that was for sure the bottom of the sign.
I'm sorry, guys. You got it. Go ahead, Brian.
If you put the bottom of the sign at 36 inches, then the top would be at 56 for the taller sign.
Yeah. Well, if we, if we go with the 15, then you're 36, so then you're 51.
51 inches.
So is that okay to then?
Do you have to give it one more time?
So make the bottom of your sign, use a 15 by 36. So make the bottom of your sign 36 inches and the top 51.
So you got a six inch gap between the bottom and the top of the fence.
Yeah, so then you've got clear view coming and going. Actually, you'd have a clear view no matter what from the south, but from the north, we're allowing you to have it a little bit higher than the fence so that people on the road can see it.
I'd just like to say, I tried to make it look old-fashioned, too.
Yeah. Looks nice. So we're trying to work with you a little bit because it's definitely nonconforming.
That's beautiful. That's more than I can access.
Okay, so going into the driveway, we had discussed the driveway and Mr. Keatsy also highlighted it. So the driveway was always an area of contention. Being that it's narrow, you got two family dwellings on either side. So we decided it had a little offset. So on the north side, we're gonna get rid of that offset and make it straight across. And that allows for another two and three-quarter feet added to the driveway width. So it was only nine, just a hair over 19 feet at the road. Now it's gonna be, yeah, 21, almost 22.
Almost, but.
Yeah, pretty close to 22 foot. So that's a lot better of a, of an area. And then also, we had discussed that you were gonna put fencing on both sides of the
Question is, okay, so we pushed that back, now there's grass there. Do you actually want to see that somehow paved, gravel? What is it that you're looking for to make it?
If you put gravel in there, I mean, you could put some cold patch in. My main thing was to get the fence in and to allow that.
Say goodbye?
Yeah. So you could, anything that you want to put in there, guys.
Just to give you whatever's the existing black patch is.
There's no fence there either on the trafficway.
Yeah, there's no fence.
That's not perfected, that one. But in reality, there's a border there that exists. You can't see it because, so we have to push it and then I have to fence it.
So is it John?
Yes, sir.
So in your question about the water runoff, the last proposal for this property was an expansion in making more of a parking area. This isn't changing anything.
Correct. I understand that.
So I think you've covered all your bases?
I have. Chris?
Yeah, I, Mark, yeah, that's the three points and we're not into the site plan part yet, so.
We can do them all at one time.
Yeah, we had our.
So the recommendations in the site plan, you know, I kind of hit on if we want to verify the lot.
So the dog, what are you gonna do with the dog runs as far as what, what's your ground condition gonna be?
The runs and the play areas are gravel.
Okay.
In fact, I actually, I lack the better term, but we insist on that.
Okay.
Versus concrete. It's pretty nasty when you get to concrete.
Are you guys fine with that? I am, I actually prefer.
In fact, if I may, I had a customer the weekend, last weekend, made the pictures, who does have concrete in their kennels and it's, it's just bad. And then you get into the situation in the winter where it freezes and then you get a runoff situation because now I've got to power wash it and where's that water gonna
Brian?
So the other item that is listed in, as a concern was the appropriate setback for that dumpster location should be three yards of property line. But if we're gonna get rid of the dumpster or.
Yeah, what do you want to do?
What have you, then we don't have that issue.
So we have to address it. So what do you want to do with the dumpster?
Oh, I, if it's up to me, I just don't want that out completely, really.
Okay, all right. That's easy.
Yeah, I don't really have any.
So then you're just gonna have roll-off container, or roll-around container? Okay. Everybody fine with that? Right? Christie?
What else, sir?
Nothing? Dave?
Nope.
Christie?
Yeah, good.
Ryan?
I have none.
So now what we'll do is approve this contingent on ZVA approval, but the screening that we were talking about, that was all geared towards an approval on ZVA. So, so that, you know, since we keep on saying it's a nonconforming lot, so what we're trying to do is just make it so that when ZVA looks at it, okay, not conforming, but you're doing this, you're doing this, it's good. Okay. So what was my next thing?
So you got that and the contingent on the lot split.
Oh, yeah, sorry, thanks. Yeah, and then it would be contingent on the lot split. So Dr. Kraus did not give us a drawing because we wanted to make sure that this was gonna go through before he went ahead and did the drawing and all of that, so.
Could be used there?
Sure.
We'll just use that.
So he's gonna have to come up with his own drawing, but this, what you guys have done here is fine, so he can just mirror this.
Go ahead.
So we'll approve it contingent on that. So you've got two contingencies.
Three.
Three? What's the third one? Oh, kennel license.
Is it a verification of the, or the, whatever you call licensure?
Yeah, I can't, once I get the kennels moved in there and established, then McComb County can come in. So that will kind of have to be a, I don't know, how do I handle that? Will my, can we say that I will get a license?
I think, so your CVO in that building is probably, you probably won't be able to get the CVO without proof of the licensure, so.
So basically, I need to get a bucket of CVO stuff and then it, we can move forward?
Yeah.
Okay.
So then it'll be another contingency. So we talked about the herbivities, the greens, the green, screening. So this being October, we would be glad to give you a extension until next growing season to put that in. But how can we do this so that it's mandatory?
Well, they can show the approval?
Yeah, but once we grant the approval, you know, we've experienced this before. You know, if it doesn't get done, then what do we do?
So what happens is the special approval is something that the village can continually monitor. And if the, if the conditions aren't fulfilled, you can, the village can take away that special approval.
Okay.
Because it's a home to a home.
So, so.
So.
So basically, you tear my life away.
Well. Go ahead.
No, I'm just, I don't know.
Okay, so, and we only, we've been caught before. So our good intentions have come back to bite us. So as Mr. Keatsy said, we're gonna grant your special approval land use contingent that you do this. If you do not do this in the time that we specify, your approval will be rescinded.
Could you explain your licensing thing again? Don't, didn't you, oh, didn't you say that you have to be?
That's okay.
An active kennel?
It, it has to be, they have to be able to see it. The accommodations that I have, they have to actually.
So you don't have to be a functional one?
No.
Okay.
Oh, so you could do that in your process?
Yes.
Okay, cool. So that's not really a hamperance?
Not, no, not really.
Good.
You also just stipulate that this is only to her, does not get with the land license.
Oh, yes. Okay. Yes, good one.
Absolutely.
Okay.
That was a new twist for the management.
I owe you one. Okay. So special approval land use is, planning commission for years and years and years thought that it was, only went to the applicant. And after that applicant vacated the premises, the special approval land use was over. But we found out that that is not the case. But since it is a special approval land use, we don't like to grant something that's gonna go on in perpetuity, right? Cool, okay. Sometimes I get my words misinterpreted.
What does that mean?
Was that?
What does that mean? Perpetual?
Oh, gee.
Forever and ever. That's good enough.
In this case, it means that as long as the conditions are met that we're talking about tonight, the use can continue on.
Yeah.
So it could be 50 years and somebody takes out the screening and then the special land use goes away, or it could be 300.
Yeah. So what we're, our policy now is special approval land use is stated in the approval that only, it's only good for the applicant. So if you were gonna sell, whoever came in would have to come in and do the same procedure. So it would be a little less because you're already there, but they would still have to do it so that you could. so that, um, you could, you could easily sell it as it is, but the approval process would be a little, would be a little bit more. So, it just gives us a chance that it doesn't morph into something that we didn't approve, and they can just move in. Then we can ensure that, uh, health, safety, and welfare, and the neighboring residents are all, um, looked after. Thanks. Okay.
Add one more thing, so we can do the approvals at the same time that the site plan is approved. So, that would be your, your final condition on special land use. Approve the site plan, and get her out of here.
So, then you can do the site plan first?
You can do them in any order, it doesn't matter. If you do the site plan first, you have your condition on special approval, or if you do special approval first, it'd be a condition on site plan approval.
Do we gotta do them separate? We can't do them together?
I would do them in two separate motions.
Okay. So, then we should do... I don't know.
Six of those had to, that, that...
Yeah, do the site plan first, then do-
I would do the special land use since you're going through those conditions right now.
Okay.
Alright, so Becky, what are our conditions again?
Yeah, there's four of them.
No, there's six.
There's six now?
Verification of kennel license. Getting a variance through the ZBA for the 500-foot rule.
Yeah.
The approval of the land split, properly recorded. Green belts, um, be allowed to be planted in the next growing season. SALU is only provided to this applicant, and upon the condition of the approval of her site plan.
Discussion? Hearing none? Motion to approve? With the conditions?
Motion to approve with the conditions.
With the six conditions?
With the six conditions specified.
Second? All in favor? Aye. Aye, okay. One stepped out? Okay. So, now we're going to the site plan. So, basically, it's the same thing, just a little bit different. So, um, so you, Dave, you've given us a drawing, you've given us multiple drawings, and you've done a great job of doing the presentations, uh, to the audience, uh, in your drawings and in the pictures that you provided. So, thanks very much for that. And that actually did help out a lot. So, okay, so we, we're, um, clear on the additional screening.
Yes.
We're clear on the driveways' expansion.
Yes.
Okay? So, there's no, there's no dumpster you're gonna have, just kind of a hand wheeling around the garbage cans. The lighting is okay. Anybody else?
Hold on, uh, we talked about the sign?
Oh, sign, yes, nice. Sign height is gonna be, so your, the fence, um...
It's monitoring.
Your fence on both sides, uh, has to be, how far back? Isn't it a car length? What is, how far back is it?
Thirty inches.
Yeah, thirty inches. So, you gotta be able to see over it.
Off of the property line?
Yeah. It'd be from the sidewalk, it'd be from the...
Minimum required setback is six feet.
So, that's for a sign?
A sign.
The fence.
Five feet.
Yeah, along the front.
Five feet.
So, that, it's supposed to be set back five feet from the sidewalk, period, right? Though it doesn't really have a height on that, it's just set back from the sidewalk. Correct?
And then fences on the side and rear may be erected right on the property line, which is where we want them along the driveway.
Yeah, so, you understand that one?
Yeah.
You can put your, your fence doesn't have to be set back from the driveway.
It does not have to be set back from the driveway.
Correct.
Put it right up to?
You can. You don't have to, but you can.
Okay.
So, that, that's kinda up to you, and your neighbor to the north on what he allows you to do. Does Dr. Kraus still own that parcel? That's, well, that makes it easier. Okay. So, what do you think about having your fence so that it steps down?
Sign.
Okay. So, I, I think that if you, you don't really need to come back your 25-foot that you've got, because that's not really a corner. So, the 25, see, that's your sight line for your sign. So, that needs ordinance, but you're not really on the corner, you've got, you've got a driveway.
Yeah.
So, really, your sight line really isn't, is actually gonna be less than the offset of your sign to the right of way. So, you don't really need to make that drop down maybe 10 or 15 feet. Am I going on the wrong direction here? Because the sight line's gonna be this way. So, instead of having this thing, because you gotta stop five feet back anyway, correct? So, I mean, you can do whatever you want.
Yeah.
Why don't you come up here first?
If you don't like, just to make sure the sign is the right length.
So, what we're trying, what I'm trying to do is help you out as far as the sign goes, but kind of, um, get this fencing, so this, you gotta stop five feet back. So, but here's your sign, here's your sight line, the other sight line's here, which is totally open. So, but I'd like this to be, so when somebody comes up here, they're not, they're not hampered by that, uh, by that fence. So, I don't know if that's really an ordinance, I'm just kinda asking you to do this because we don't really have too many commercial driveways coming out with fences like this. So, um, and I would say that if we brought this back, so if a pickup truck is 18 feet, unless it's got a double cab, and then I think it's 20, maybe 21 or 22 foot. So, if we came back here 15 foot, that 15 to 20 foot, which would give, even if somebody didn't come right up there, they could still see the sidewalk. You're really not trying to see the road, you're really trying to see the sidewalk.
Correct.
So, you wanna see kids on bicycles, or, you know, somebody on a, you know, coming through here that...
So, you wanna start five foot back, and then you want an additional 10 feet?
Well, I would, I would say, you know...
Or 15 additional?
So, this total would be 15 to 20.
Okay.
So, you know, if you, if you did 20, you, let's call it 20, so you step into your fence down 15 foot.
So, we'll go five foot setback. Fifteen foot is lower.
Yeah, yeah.
From there, we'll raise to 36.
Yeah, yeah. Does that sound okay?
Okay.
I mean, again, it's, it's an unusual thing. You guys go along with this? It's unusual because you have a commercial driveway close to two houses. So, we kinda talked about this, Susan, you and I, that, you know, the safety was a, was a real big concern, and that's why we extended the driveway.
So, we're not truly considering the corner coming?
No.
Within that space?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, this, so this still goes by ordinance, and ordinance is kinda going that this is, this is the commercial drive that it is, but it's different than what, you know, than what it actually is.
So, I could actually scoop the sign up a little?
No, no, I don't think so.
I'd say the sign is stuck with...
Yeah, right.
Alright.
So, we gotta, you know, we kinda gotta stick with ordinance as much as we can. But then, I wanna hit on the safety thing here, besides just the ordinance.
Right.
So, the last thing that either one of us would want is that you have this sign up here further. Somebody came up here, and some kid on a bicycle are coming over here, so you want that sign back further, so that, you know, that sight distance is, you know, maybe somebody, 16-year-old kid's gonna pick their dog up.
Sure.
You know, nothing against 16-year-old kids, but I was one once.
Okay, no problem.
Thank you. Okay. So, okay, just kinda let the audience know what we did. We're discussing the fencing that borders the driveway and a safety issue with sight distance and sight, um, for pedestrians and, um, other people on self-propelled vehicles. Okay. What else? Oh, your driveway, whatever you put in there, you might wanna do asphalt in the end, but you could probably do a cold patch, and the only reason I'm saying this is because I had gravel, and if you're gonna remove snow, you push the gravel.
I don't know what to throw.
Kind of, kinda whatever you wanna do. Christie?
Good.
Dave?
Good.
Chris? Ryan? Cool, okay.
Alright, so what's our conditions on the site plan? What do you have?
I have that she's gonna put the fence on both sides of the driveway, that she's going to install that green belt. She's going to remove the dumpster.
Alright, but the fence is gonna be 30, and the transition is gonna be a 20 feet?
20 foot from the right of way.
Right of way.
Yeah, so that's basically the sidewalk. We'll call it the sidewalk.
The only other item I have is screening, but you've already addressed that in the special land use.
Sorry, what was that again?
So, the only other thing I identified in the letter was additional screening, but we've already taken care of that, yeah, in the special land use conditions.
No dumpster.
So, we need a motion there?
Here we do. Go ahead. Before we forget, about the driving, was anything else on the driveway extension that is additional 2.74 feet, what did we say?
As long as that's in a special approval, that's whatever we need to do.
It's shown on the plan, so we don't need to address anything.
Alright, motion to approve the Suzie's Bed and Biscuit site plan with the condition as specified.
Well, how about we?
So, let's say, let's go ahead and put them out there.
Yeah, how about we add that this is special approval, and it, um, all special approval, uh, items need to be satisfied for this approval.
Do you wanna go back, connect back to the other one?
Do, does, do we do that or not?
It is contingent upon special land use, or...
Yeah, but it would, you just gave the reason for that one, though.
Uh, it is contingent upon...
Maintaining the conditions for special-
For special approval?
The special approval conditions have been met.
Continue to be met.
Continue to be met. Okay, okay. We're talking.
Do we need to mention the lot split again?
No.
I think you got that covered in the other one, right?
Right. Yeah, okay.
Okay. A reread?
Motion to approve site plan for Suzie's Bed and Biscuit with the following conditions. Fence is on both sides of the driveway, set back five feet from the sidewalk, 30-inch height or 20 feet from the sidewalk. Uh, green belt will be installed, dumpster will be removed, and contingent on all SALU conditions being maintained.
Okay. Motion?
So, he did, he moved outside of it.
All in favor? Aye. Welcome to Armada. Okay, so, you have a few conditions, you gotta go to zoning board of appeals, so do that kinda right away, so they meet only on request.
Okay, so, what is, I have that right here.
Huh?
I have it right here.
Oh, you're ready, okay, cool.
So, what do I do with it? Bring it to me.
Okay, alright. So, don't give it to anyone. Okay, so, uh, then we have to get with Dr. Kraus about the land split. He's gotta register the land split, get that done. And, so, you gotta basically do all the things that we talked about. The only thing you have a, um, a leeway on is the green belt. Oh, we didn't have a timeframe on the green belt. So, next growing season? Okay, okay. Okay. Go. We should've put a date.
That covers it.
Yeah, okay, yeah, you'll be fine, right?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
I'm just thinking of timing here now, because I gotta get inspections done.
Well, your timing all hinges, and at this point, it's just you, so it's special approval land use in the, in the lot split. Once you do that, then you can go ahead and start working. Then, once you're done working, uh, other than the green belt, you can go to Dennis from you or building inspector and get a certificate of occupancy. You're gonna need to get a full building permit for the shed things that you're building.
Oh, they're already built.
Okay, well, how about installing the shed things? Because you're gonna have heat, right?
Uh, yeah, it's individual to the building.
Understood, but you're still gonna have...
Yeah, there'll be some minimal permits.
Yeah, so you're gonna have, you're gonna have permits. So, the permits, and then you're gonna get a certificate of occupancy.
Uh-huh, but don't I need inspections on the clinic?
Only on the building, so I, I don't...
What do you mean?
Yeah, what do you mean?
Electrical, mechanical?
Yes, that's, that's our building, that's our building, right?
Can I start doing that? I know it's a little out of order.
I would say that if you feel comfortable investing in this before you get these other things done, that's all on you.
Because then I can start, um, it all, right now, it's a matter of timing. There's several things overlapping, but the first thing that I can start working on really is certificate of occupancy inspections for the clinic. I still have to operate my kennels, so is that okay if I go ahead and get those?
I've often done things out of order.
Okay, okay.
And in terms of issuing a building permit, you can do that now that you have zoning approval, so you can look at it and say, as long as all of his, all of the building inspector's items to check off are done, this board, the approval they just gave is one of them, so...
Okay.
So, okay, feel free, as Ben said, if you're, if you're comfortable making the investment.
So, can the ZBA approval be done administratively, or does that require another meeting?
It's gonna be another sharing.
Okay. How do we go about scheduling that meeting, Becky does that?
Well, when you turn all your paperwork in?
Yeah.
They will contact you with when they schedule their meeting.
Okay.
I can contact you tomorrow.
Oh, is that you? Okay. I also have questions.
Okay. Anything else? Congratulations, welcome to Armada, and good luck. Thank you. Okay. Hopefully, questions in the audience were answered, and... Okay, so now we're doing the land split. Dr. Kraus isn't here, did he put his application in? Okay, so, all we have to do is, if it isn't a special approval, it's just a land split, so, um, we're gonna, um, notify Dr. Kraus that the special approval was granted with this 2.74 extension on the driveway, and then he can do the necessary paperwork for this, and with the specification on the rear back here, so duplicate this drawings.
It's almost done, Ben, you know, it'll be completed. You'll have it right away.
Okay, we kinda thought so.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. So, then, this, so we'll grant this approval, it's okay with the board, grant this approval on condition of getting the documentation from the county. So, we have to, uh, I guess maybe you should let us see it, let, bring it to the office, let Becky see it, make sure it's okay before you go ahead and spin the wheels and find out and say, whoa, that's not right. Just let us look at it. find out and say, whoa, that's not right. Just let us look at it, then it can go to the county, get registered, and everything's kosher. Okay?
Thank you.
Discussion? Chris, Dave, motion to approve, uh, the
Pleasure.
site plan as presented for Suzie's.
We already did.
No, lots of lands.
Huh?
Yeah, we did, we did the lot split.
Yeah, well, yeah, that's what I meant.
The land split. As proposed.
As proposed for the Suzie's site plan drawing.
So, okay, second.
Okay, all in favor? Well, well, well.
On the conditions that we receive.
Oh, yeah, okay, on the condition that we receive the documentation from the county. Okay, if, if, we can, so there's a meeting going on, excuse me.
Officer.
Who, who?
He's outside about being my labor.
Okay, well, so we can, if we could hold the discussion until the meeting's over or go outside.
Okay.
Okay, so, and I'm glad that you guys are, uh, cohabitate, uh, or something like that. With the tents between you. Um, okay, so what's next?
Do we pass that motion?
Yes, we thought. Okay, yes, okay, yeah.
Well, who first?
Becky was, Becky was motion on the second.
No, it's not.
Christie.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Christie.
Christie and Chris.
Yeah, yeah. C C.
You firsted?
I firsted, yeah.
Yeah.
That must be a legal verb.
We're all giving it to you now. Okay, um, so Christie, uh, made the motion, Chris seconded, all in favor? Aye. Okay, go move. Okay.
Ten A, ten.
Ten.
Yeah, ten, special approval for, um, two two seven five five R O's. So what we're doing is taking an existing church and turning it into a duplex. So we have two drawings. Uh, Mr. Nichols is here and Ms. Nichols is here. So what do you guys want to do? So which, which, which drawing?
I don't know which drawing, does it matter which drawing we did? They're both, they're both, uh, within setbacks.
Okay.
So.
Okay, you gotta come up to the thing before you get a, uh, building permit, but I guess we could approve either one, or not.
We gotta set a public hearing.
Well, that's right.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that's called a careful, right? Yeah, okay, yeah. I'm getting ahead of myself. Okay, so, uh, everybody kind of understand what's going on. There's still, um, I asked for dimensions on the building, that's still not on the drawing.
Yeah, it is.
It is?
Is it?
No. The dimension on the existing building.
I've got it listed on there that it's thirty-six by eighty, because I got all the computations there.
Well, it must be on just these papers.
Yep.
Okay. So, but when you, so we'll, we gotta, I want to put those on the drawing. Okay, so all we're gonna do, does everybody understand what's going on?
No.
No?
No.
Okay, the church is a church, correct, it's no longer a church.
Correct.
Okay, so now it's gonna be turned into a duplex. So that's allowed in the village ordinance, but it requires a special approval land use, just like we went through tonight. We're not doing that tonight, we're setting that up for our next meeting, which would be the first Monday of November. And then we'll kind of go through the same process we did tonight with the special approval. But again, this meets ordinance. With the special approval.
Can.
Huh?
Can meet.
It can, it can meet, uh, it can meet the ordinance with a special approval.
That'd be November sixth.
Okay, November sixth.
So it's being approved without public hearing?
No, 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 public hearings, I, I guess we're having a public hearing November sixth.
And then after, and then it'll go forward?
It's the, the same thing that happened tonight.
So if you've got objections, there's support or something, you can come to that meeting and make those down.
Yes. Ready? Okay, so a motion to set the public hearing for November sixth, seven thirty P M. Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Aye, so moved. Okay, sorry for rushing, but we got a lot of stuff to cover, and we all want to go. Okay, so.
By the way, Ben, the answer to what you were asking is on this page, you've got the dimensions.
Yeah, I know, it's just nice if you got all the drawings, all the dimensions on the drawing, so we'll, we'll get that done. So, okay, so letter. Last month, we requested counsel and, um, Mr. Conan, you weren't here, you could have helped our cause. We requested counsel to write a letter to the C one and C two people to help the building inspector, so he didn't have to act always after the fact that people would know that if they had a sidewalk sale, or if they put anything out on the sidewalk, they had to get with the building inspector first. They couldn't just arbitrarily go do whatever they wanted, when they wanted. So counsel declined to write that letter, for whatever reason, I have no idea.
It wasn't at the last meeting.
So, um, was that discussed at the meeting?
It was.
Yeah, but, but was their direction?
To get Dennis to write the letter.
I think the letter should come from counsel. If, what do you think?
Um, I have no problem with Dennis Lemieux doing it. He's gonna be the one that enforces it.
Understood, but it, it goes, if.
I have no problem with you requesting, you know, if you want to give a request to the council to reconsider it, that would be fine.
Okay, so would you support our position?
I'm not sure yet.
Okay, well, I would request that you would support our, our request, because if you ask the building inspector to do this, there isn't quite as much as if you just said counsel write a letter and, uh.
I don't know what, what Dennis has said on this subject.
Well, Dennis, so what we're trying to do is just help the building inspector out, so again, rather than have something, have him have to act after the fact, just write a letter stating, you know, just stating the ordinance.
Why wouldn't he want us to ask if, if he thought that was gonna help him, why wouldn't he ask that?
Because he's actually.
That's what that, I think that's, if I understand.
He's asked us to help us, so that's, we're the intermediary.
Well, I'll just talk to Dennis, see what he's saying on this one. What you're, what, you'd like the council just to write a letter to the business people downtown reviewing.
The ordinance, the, the ordinance.
Before, uh, like if they're doing a sidewalk sale or something.
Anything, any, any activity that protrudes onto the sidewalk. So, okay, so the, the planning commission did, um, cozies. So they came, they came to the planning commission for an approval. So if you have a major thing, you have to come to the planning commission. A minor thing, and we did it in a sign ordinance where if you put a sign, if you, you're allowed to put a signage out on the sidewalk, but right in the, the sign ordinance says that you have to contact the building inspector to, um, to do so, and I think there's actually something in there too, if you have a sidewalk sale, you gotta do that. Am I correct?
I didn't see it.
No?
No, I looked.
So, um.
So what if, who gave, what if we gave David a counsel bill later? For them to, for them to.
Well, because it didn't really.
And then to put it on, for them to write it, and basically you're telling them what to write.
Yeah, well, I mean, I guess we could do that.
And they help the situation, is that they don't, either know what to say, want to say, or put it in Jeff's court, for example, I don't know what, I don't know what to say either, so.
Yeah.
I guess, I guess maybe it wouldn't hurt to have a letter go out from somebody, uh, because we know that that's been violated this summer, and we've had complaints about it.
Yeah, I mean, if, if.
I've had citizens ask me about some areas downtown where they felt it was difficult walking through because there was things protrude, but I don't want to, you know, there's more than one.
And, and then, okay, so you have that aspect, but the planning commission aspect is if somebody comes in, does everything they're supposed to do, and gets an approval, and their neighborhood just goes, their neighbor just goes ahead and does it, what does that make us look like?
You know, this kind of thing happens constantly in town. So we're trying, we're trying to go ahead and do things.
Understood.
And it doesn't necessarily make it you, make you look bad because somebody goes and does something that may be somewhat of a violation. It does not make this office look bad.
Okay.
But I do agree that it's nice to be consistent.
Yes, very nice to be consistent. Okay, so, um, so that was my ten A. If counsel doesn't do it, I would hope, I would, I'll bring this back to the board at the next meeting. Okay, public comment? Don't all speak at once.
Ben, in regards to the letter that you're talking about, I guess we, council would like input to know what the ordinance is for, so we're not just willy-nilly making up our own stuff.
Well, part of it would be zoning ordinance, but part of it would be the court ordinance, so that's why I don't want planning to write it.
That's why we kind of threw it back on Dennis, because he's the enforcer.
The enforcer, that he.
He knows. I believe he knows what he's enforcing, but members, some members of council don't, so that's why you need a letter with certain specifications on it, so we know what we're agreeing or not agreeing to.
Okay, so then how about if we get a consortium, so we get planning put in our input, Dennis put his input in, and you guys to put an input in, and counsel takes all this and puts it into a letter form and sends it up.
Okay, I can see that happening. Just gonna give our stamp of approval with your recommendations and Dennis's recommendations.
Because I think that the letter holds the most weight if it comes from counsel. And then, again, all this really is to do, all that, all that we're trying to do is circumvent anything happening in the future. At least then they can't say, well, I didn't know.
You didn't know.
No, I think that'd be good.
Well, you think because you sent out a letter every Monday, that somebody won't come back and say they didn't know?
That, 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 that may be, that may be the case.
But at least you can say what we did send it to you.
Well, yeah, so we've done, we've done, we've done due diligence, and all you're really trying to do is just make it a level playing field.
Just look at it.
So it's like somebody said on T V today, the bad guys are gonna do what the bad guys do, no matter what the laws are. Okay. No public comments? How do you think we did tonight?
Great.
Okay, cool, thanks. Twist the arm, yeah. Okay, so chair report. Um, so first, the first thing I had was the sidewalk letter. The next thing was, uh, um, Fritz. So we talked about Fritz last meeting. I did, uh, get a call from Jeff, uh, near the end of last month. He wants to set up a meeting, uh, with, uh, with Mr. Rulock, myself, and, um, Ed Saratowski. So we kind of would like that to happen this week, I don't know if it is, but he wants to have that meeting soon. So, moving on from there, there is a pre-seminar put on by Row, and it's on this very subject. So promoting economic development and addressing issues related to subdivision condominium development. So, that's kind of what this is, is the condominium development, and it is a pre-seminar uh, put on by our planner, not our, yeah, not our planner, but our engineer, sorry. And this is gonna be on October twentieth, uh, excuse me, twenty-sixth, so we have to let them know by the twentieth. So it's twenty-sixth from seven to nine, so you went there one time. So, anybody wants to go, I think I'm gonna go, and you could drive with me or go by yourself.
I don't have time for that, because we're two weeks away. My mic.
Okay. Okay, cool, all right, just let me know. So, or let me know, let Becky know. So you have to kind of remind me since you took that. Okay, so, um, okay, um, so, this is kind of in the vein of the letter again. So, Armada Jams put up a big banner. They were asked to take the banner down, they put the banner up. So it's no longer in the, on the fence, but. Oh, Armada, excuse me, yeah, Armada Gaden. So, but that banner is not a legal entity in Armada. So there are other bands, there has been another banner like that, which, the, it was hung by the fair, Armada Fair, or Armada Agricultural Society, um, but that was done with approval of the planning commission and the village council. So there were banners hung on a fence in the park, and that was done for the Armada Jams. That was also done with planning commission approval and council approval. It was done at no expense to a community group. Armada Gaden knew about this, but they still chose not to do this, and it's an illegal banner. So I want to let the public know that this can be done, it just needs to be done through the proper steps. And I don't know what will happen, uh, but, um, the proper channels need to be followed. All it is, is a meeting, but I'm not gonna go further. Okay, anything else? You got something to say on that one?
On that one, I would say, so, you know, the previous ordinance, before we just updated it, wouldn't have allowed that type of sign.
Yes.
So I think the new ordinance does allow a mechanism for the town, for the village to approve those kinds of signs. As you said, it is just a meeting, ensure standards, and move on. So I think we made a step in the right direction with the new ordinance to address those kinds of things, and just may take some coaching to get everybody up to date with the process.
So I guess I, I skipped that one. So, again, those, the, the type of signs, so the fair board sign has been up there forever, but it was really against ordinance. The, the signs in the park were against ordinance, so we created an ordinance that made all that stuff possible in a legal sense. So, since everybody else did this, we would also like, we would like everybody to follow the rules. And we, as Mr. Casey said, we created an ordinance and a vehicle to do, do just that. So we want everything to go along, just everybody go along in a proper fashion. Okay.
And I think that will happen, it just didn't happen this year.
Correct.
It's a new ordinance.
Yeah.
Uh, what was done in the past is not necessarily now. Some people and their enthusiasm didn't quite realize that. Hopefully, in the future, things will be, but I know it's a little bit frustrating, but I think everybody will get on board.
Yeah.
Again, this is just a new, new ordinance, before, like you said, before that, we really were doing things that weren't within ordinance.
And we're also.
So this is nothing different than what had been going on.
Correct.
But hopefully, this will get corrected. There's been, you know, there's a lot of passion here, there's a lot of people trying to do things for the community, and, um, sometimes everybody butts heads, but hopefully, uh, things will get smoothed out, and we're working on that.
And that's why I brought it up this evening. Okay, so, and then kind of.
But there's no bad guys here.
So in the same vein, uh, the, uh, lion sign is gonna dig down on the four corners. Um, we're working on, uh, something to replace that. I just, uh, need somebody from the lions to get ahold of us to, uh, go any further. So, other than that, um, nobody has anything else, motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Both?
Yeah, I can get a pause in.
The time is nine.